Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Mr. Brown has the meeting and properly appetized.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Just heads up, we do know that Commissioner Gillis was absent today. Commissioner Jones is tied up at work. Commissioner Fraser's coming late for his son's soccer game. Working with a small corps to get started, we can get started. Thank you for coming to our Liberty County Board of Commissioners meeting, our first Tuesday meeting. Good to see everyone. We're gonna ask now that prepare. Let's see, are they, are you all electing to stand? Okay, alright. No, mom said I always give your company a seat. So, we've asked Mr. Mosley if he would come down and lead us in our prayer and our pledge. Please stand for our prayer. Mr. Hendricks, one of your younger leaders in the pledge. Come stand by him, sweetheart.
Lead us in the pledge.
Just a minute, lead the pledge, just a minute. Come stand by him.
I'm gonna pray and then you gonna turn and do it, okay?
Okay, yes, sir.
Okay, let's pray. Gracious God, we thank you for this beautiful day and your boundless blessings. We pray, Father God, that you would give this liberty body, divine wisdom and insight to carry on the business of the community. We pray that you continue to be with us and help us. And, Father God, we want to pause and pray for our tax commissioner, Mr. Virgil Jones. Pray that you continue to strengthen him and heal this body. This we thank you for, in Christ's name, and everybody say, amen.
Amen.
Alright, alright. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Now, you will give them your name, come, come, come to the microphone. Tell us your name, come to the microphone, tell us your name.
Hello, my name is Daisy Clay.
Daisy Clay?
Yes, sir.
Daisy Clay, thank you for leading us in the pledge today.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity.
Certainly welcome, I like the way you present yourself. I like the way you present yourself. Ms. Daisy Clay, Mr. Brown led us in our pledge. He's gonna put that in our records, Ms. Clay, and in fifty years from now, you can come back and read those records and your name will be there. Thank you so much. The minutes from September, require our approval, if we had time to look over those.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the minutes as presented.
Second, I. Motion to second, we approve the September minutes as presented. Any further discussion? If you have a favor, let's show of hands, please. Alright, we have a forum, thank you. Today's a day of proclamations. Paint Liberty Pink Day, Georgia Military Veterans Hall of Fame Day, National 4-H Week, Save Our Next Generation Day. Mr. Brown, do we have them in that order?
I have them whatever order you want to call them, sir.
Alright, let's see, my paint liberty, yeah, I see. If you all, let's do it this way, paint liberty, if you're prepared to come this way. And then the next group, military veterans. I'm not sure there'd be someone here for that group. 4-H and then save our next, we'll just do like graduation, we'll start coming around. One group up, one group down. Let's see, is there a presentation, is there a statement for, for our paint liberties? We entertain a statement.
You want them to come on up?
I was gonna have, who's speaking for paint liberty? Ms. Villafein, are you? If you would come to the microphone, please. But if your group, your paint liberty group, will come and stand behind us, please. And then she will join us before the picture taken.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Well, I'm back again for the proclamation. As most of you know my story, my sister passed away in March of 2019. Seven months later, it was the month of October, Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And I reached out to Karen Bell first because she was always in charge of Relay for Life. And I was like, Karen, I just wanna do something small to honor my sister, like most of us want to do when we lose a loved one. And before I knew it, I reached out to Leah Poole and we had proclamations ready to go. I was surprised that there was never proclamation in the city or the county. And this movement has become really big. And I thank everyone that is here tonight supporting this movement. The hospital was the first time this year we partnered with the hospital. We had the mammogram bus come down. And the women that used it that day, they said it was the best experience. Cause, I mean, the best experience for having a mammogram, put it like that. And just to see the support, so I thank you all for being here tonight.
Thank you. If you'll come around, Mr. Brown, you can, he will read the proclamation. Ms. Villafein, you joining your group? Cause we'll be in last team so they can see you.
This is a proclamation, Liberty County Board of Commissioners, Paint Liberty Pink Day. Whereas while considerable progress has been made in the fight against breast cancer, it remains the most commonly diagnosed cancer and the second leading cause of death among women in the United States. And whereas each year is estimated that more than 220,000 women in the United States will be diagnosed with breast cancer and more than 40,000 will die as a result of the disease. And whereas October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, an annual campaign to increase awareness about the disease. And whereas during this month, we affirm our commitment to support breast cancer research and to educate all citizens about its risk factors, detection and treatment. And whereas we display pink ribbons and wear pink clothing to raise awareness, we also support those courageously fighting breast cancer and honor the lives lost to the disease. And whereas this October, we recognize breast cancer survivors, those battling the disease, their families and friends who are a tireless source of love and encouragement, and applaud the efforts of our medical professionals and researchers working to find a cure for this deadly disease. And whereas Breast Cancer Awareness Month is an opportunity to unite all citizens in our community to prevent breast cancer deaths through increased education and regular screening. Now therefore, I, Donald L. Lovett, Chairman of Liberty County, Georgia, do hereby proclaim Thursday, October 19th, as a day to recognize the efforts being made in our city and county. Therefore, Thursday, October 19th, 2023, will be Paint Liberty Pink Day, so declared on this third day of October, 2023.
Thank you, sir. Y'all will come in a little. Everybody in there. And I gotta give a shout out to my Liberty Region folk, I worked with them for forty plus years.
Oh, man.
Alright, Paint Liberty.
Pink. Have a good test.
One other thing too, this is the fifth year and I wanna thank Thomas Hill Jewelers because they partnered with us as well. And we gave, they gave me the opportunity to choose a nice necklace. And people have been buying these necklaces and all of the proceeds are going to go to Relay for Life. And Ms. Karen Bell has something to say. And this is my guest, Ms. Charlene Jenkins.
Alright, on behalf of Relay for Life and Angie Dixon Foundation, we would like to give you one of those necklaces, just to let you know that we're here for you, that we support you and that we honor, that we want you to see as Relay say, one more, two more, a lot more birthdays.
She's a survivor.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all. Thank y'all for coming, we look forward to it. Georgia Military Veterans Hall of Fame Day. I knew that one came in the mail to us, asking us to do this proclamation, so there may not be anyone here for that, bro.
This is a proclamation, Liberty County, Georgia, Georgia Military Veterans Hall of Fame Incorporated Day. Whereas since the founding of Georgia in 1733, over one million of its finest citizens have served in the military, to include active duty, the reserves and the National Guard. And whereas the patriotic men and women of Liberty County have always served to ensure that Liberty County, Georgia and America are defended and protected. And whereas Georgia currently has 678,304 living veterans of former service to Americhurch military branches. And whereas in 2013, the Georgia Military Veterans Hall of Fame Incorporated was established to honor and induct annually fifteen Georgians into the nation's premier military veterans hall of fame. And whereas through 2023, 177 Georgians have been inducted, to include one from Liberty County. And whereas since establishing an annual ROTC scholarship program in 2020, the Georgia Military Veterans Hall of Fame Incorporated has awarded 39 $4,000 scholarships to Georgia's top 39 senior high school JROTC cadets, who are enrolled in ROTC program at a Georgia four-year university. And whereas we commend the Georgia Military Veterans Hall of Fame and the 177 inductees and encourage all citizens to educate themselves concerning this effort and get involved in nominating worthy veterans. Therefore, I, Donald L. Lovett, Chairman of Liberty County Board of Commissioners, do recognize and honor this endeavor and inductees, to hereby proclaim Saturday, November 4th, 2023, as the Georgia Military Veterans Hall of Fame Incorporated Day.
Now, I know I have one veteran in here. Any others besides Commissioner Stevens? Come on and take this photo out and represent the vets. You alright?
Yep.
Okay. Put him in the middle. Thank you for your service.
Yes, sir.
National 4-H Week, representatives to speak first, if you do that. And then your entourage will prepare to come and stand behind us. It's like they have goodies.
Yeah.
Good evening, commissioners, administrators, guests. Happy National 4-H Week. We are, this group is our junior and senior 4-Hers. They are within seventh and twelfth grades. And we actually just finished doing a little community cleanup right at the roundabout, picking up trash and things. But this week, we're just celebrating all of the great things that 4-H does around our nation. And we've been doing a variety of different programs and events throughout this week. So, we wanted to take this opportunity to simply say thank you for all that you do for Liberty County and all that you do for our office. So, we are some of the, some of the students from our Liberty County 4-H office.
Good to have you all, good to have you all. Is there a proclamation?
There is.
Alright.
This is State of Georgia, County of Liberty, Georgia 4-H, National 4-H Week proclamation. Whereas the young people of Georgia and Liberty County are a greatest natural resource. And whereas the 4-H program has assisted in the growth and development of Georgia and Liberty County youth for 119 years. And whereas adult volunteer leaders and advisors are devoting their talents, leadership and resources to serving these leaders of tomorrow. And whereas 4-H helped its members thrive by discovering and acquiring the 4-H essential elements of positive youth development of mastery, generosity, belonging and independence in the areas of leadership, civic engagement, healthy living and agriculture and STEM. And whereas Liberty County supports Georgia 4-H and encourages young people and adults to become involved in the educational entertaining programs offered by the 4-H program in Liberty County through the University of Georgia College of Agricultural and Environmental Sciences Cooperative Extension. Now therefore, we, the Board of Commissioners of Liberty County, do declare and proclaim the week of October 1st through 7th, 2023, to be Georgia 4-H Week and urge all our citizens to assist in, in according this observance, the attention and importance to which it is so rightly entitled. In testimony whereof, I, Donald L. Lovett, Chairman of Liberty County Board of Commissioners, subscribe my name on this third day of October, 2023.
Thank you, sir. Are they coming in? Don't be shy.
It's okay.
Who's gonna receive, who's gonna receive? Come up right here, that way. There you go.
Okay, on count of three, 4-H, one, two, three.
4-H.
Thank you, young people. We love youth development, civic engagement, character building, all those kinda things. Thank you, sir.
Just give a little one to the chairman.
Take one out of them, they need it, both of them need it. Thank you all, young people. We look forward to your development, especially as you migrate through the school system. Please know that the community needs well-developed young people. We need well-developed young people who represent Liberty County well. We have something that we say here, it's called Liberty County Proud. So, I want all of you to make us continually Liberty County proud in what you do. Thank you for coming and please enjoy and take advantage of everything that you're learning in 4-H. Those skills will follow you for life and you'll be the better 4-H. Thank you again for coming. And Shelly, thank you for leading the pledge, you did a good job with that. Good job, okay. Save Our Next Generation Day?
Yes, sir, this is a proclamation, Save Our Next Generation Day. Whereas Save Our Next Generation, or SONG, is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization created to raise further awareness of bullying in our communities. And whereas bullying is a form of aggressive behavior in which someone intentionally and repeatedly causes another person discomfort or injury. And whereas bullying occurs in neighborhoods, playgrounds, schools, workplaces and online through technology. And whereas various researchers have concluded that bullying is the most common form of violence affecting millions of American children and adolescents annually. And whereas children and adolescents who are bullied can experience negative physical, social, emotional, academic and mental health issues. And whereas millions of students skip school each year for the fear of being bullied, with an alarming rate of suicides and school shootings. And whereas Save Our Next Generation is committed to bringing about change in our communities for the safety and well-being of our children. And whereas together we can make a difference in creating a positive culture. Now therefore, I, Donald L. Lovett, Chairman of Liberty County Board of Commissioners, to hereby proclaim the first Friday of October every year as Save Our Next Generation Day for anti-bullying awareness in Liberty County, Georgia. I encourage our local communities, school officials, businesses, politicians, first responders and law enforcement to support this call by wearing orange to demonstrate that we stand together and united for kindness, acceptance and inclusion. And witness thereof, I intend to set my hand and cause the great seal of Liberty County, Georgia to be affixed this third day of October in the year of our Lord, 2023.
Is the representative here for? Come on, dear, I didn't see you sitting in that corner.
Can I see it?
Yes, you can. Good afternoon, good evening. Can I get that little group right there to hold up just a second? I like to address those young people as well, I won't be long, I promise. Save Our Next Generation was a vision given to me seven years ago. Because sticks and stones may break my bones, but words can never hurt me, is a lie. So, the vision that I was given, seven years ago, I had no idea that we will be in the position that we're in now, where I'm here receiving a proclamation. I do what I do because I love kids. Today, I thought my, my family and some other folks would accompany me, but because of unforeseen circumstances, scheduling conflicts, this little mama, I said, well, I don't have anybody to go with me. But this is all I need right here because I do this for her. This is River, River Brown, my granddaughter. She is the next generation, as well as you, young people over to my left. I implore you, and your parents and anybody here, to please help us celebrate Save Our Next Generation Day. I came up with this because it's a day for you guys. It's a day for you guys to celebrate. And each year, I hope that it becomes bigger. I also like to thank my bestie Kathy Villafein, my good friend Charlene Jenkins, who's over here to the left.
Let me try.
Charlene was with me from the start, she even created, wrote a song. Save a life, be nice. And it's a beautiful, beautiful song. So, I won't keep you guys any longer, but I hope that you can join us on Friday and wear an orange throughout this county. Thank you so much.
Wear an orange.
Okay, what do you wanna say? Say hi and bye. Say thank you.
Thank you.
Who's gonna come and take the photo out with you? Ms. Brown, who's coming to take the photo out with you? Now, we can borrow them young people out here. Kathy, okay, alright. Come on, young people.
Come on, come on.
No, you're not. Song says, no, not alone. Thank you for the work you do, Ms. Brown, your commitment. That's what makes this community better, when it's a community effort. Grassroots-led, government can't do everything. I think it has to be in the hands of the people. I think it has to be in the hands of the people. At this time, Commissioner Stevens wanted to make mention of the loss of someone who has been a, on, on the firing lot, if you will, in Liberty County, who we lost today, so.
To those in attendance today, earlier this morning, we, Mr. Joe Martin of Sunbury, he was a retired firefighter from Jacksonville. He came into Liberty County and he put his best foot forward in helping to protect the eastern end of Liberty County. He did his utmost. Uh, he passed away this morning about, I guess about three o'clock. And from my understanding, his funeral service is going to be sad in Richmond Hill at eleven o'clock. Let's keep the family impressed.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate his service also. Our Department of Reports, Mr. Long. Engineering.
Okay, one of the things I needed to present tonight were L-MIC funds and kind of make some presentations to you guys. I'm not looking for a vote tonight. I do need to turn this in by December, but as soon as we can make a decision, that would be wonderful. I gave you a list. We get four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars and ninety cents this year. That's the L-MIC formula amount. Our required matched thirty percent is one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars and seventy-seven cents. So what I've given you is a spreadsheet upfront that pretty much has the L-MIC funds broken down six different ways. And it has suggested projects on it. I also have on the very back, this Jim clip been in, some additional projects that if you want to consider, and some dollar signs that go along with those. Now, I talked to Commissioner Stevens, and he wanted me to just kind of hold the amount because he was trying to think about which roads and what he would like to do and balance what money he has left to be able to make a decision there. For Commissioner Frazier, he and I talked at the retreat that possibly used this year's L-MIC money. He kept last year's L-MIC money with this, along with his sale stacks, and that would assist doing that. With Commissioner Thrift, I put Well Cemetery Raid. We're trying to get right away on that. We have two people to get it from. For Commissioner Jones, I put Villages at Limerick Roadway Repair. There's some things in that subdivision that need to get fixed that he had asked me to work on. Now, several of these in the back are also in Commissioner Jones's district. So some are in Commissioner Stevens, some are in Commissioner Thrift, and some are in Commissioner Jones's district. For Commissioner Gillard, I talked to him. He is working on Smiley Lane. I think there were some agreements to help the city with that. And Mr. Simonton told me that Mr. Gillard and possibly Mr. Walden were looking at helping participate with that. So he gave me some numbers to use as placeholders for that, that road. Also, I got an understanding that Commissioner Gillard is looking at possibly an overlay of South Main Street, which is the little leg of South Main Street that goes from Darcy Road back out to eighty-four. Because you know, once you get to Darcy Road and Hines and South Main turns, and it's that little residential road that comes out there by Hines for Glass. That road hadn't been, nothing's been done to it in thirty years or more. For this way, I did the paving on it when I worked for Paul Simonton, and I left Paul Simonton in eighty-seven. It's been a long time. I talked to Commissioner Walden about maybe doing a portion of McIntosh Lake Road, and that's where the numbers fall for McIntosh Lake Road as well. So I'm open for any other discussions that you may have. Some of these roads that we see in the back, I went to our prioritization that we did several years ago, and I pulled some of these, the, the top priorities off of that is where I got some of these. Now, I realize that a road prioritization really needs to change, and we've actually accomplished a good bit of work on the, the worst ones. But like Bakentown Road, that's a county road that goes by the road department. That's in, starting to get in pretty bad shape, especially as it approaches Highway eighty-four. A lot of, there's some needs there. If we go ahead and fix it now, it won't be so bad. If we let it go too much longer, it'll start exponentially failing, and we'll have a worse problem on our hands. County Line Road has several places in it that needs to get done. We've put about, that's, County Line Road's a long road, so I didn't put it all on here. I put about four thousand feet of repair on here. Trying to get what we would consider the worst parts. Pay Rogers Road is one, it's, it's needing a little bit. That's in Commissioner Jones's district. Of course, Homestown Road in Commissioner Gillard's district is in need of some repair. That's in your district now. Sorry. I know that.
That was only a test.
And the other one that's gonna come up soon is Rogers Pasture Road. And no, Rogers Past, yeah, I did skip Interstate Paper. Interstate Paper's a big line item. Now, Liberty County has just a small portion past the Riceboro city limits. So, you know, at some point, we probably need to bring that back up on how we're gonna fix that. I've got a plan. And I, I, not a set of plans, but we've done all the roadway cores, and we know the level of work that we need to do as far as trying to use that existing asphalt as a base, and we're gonna build up and use that as a base and fix shoulders and do some of that stuff, so.
Actually, we would do it just like how we did Bill Carter Road?
No, no. Bill Carter Road, Bill Carter Road, we completely rebuilt it. We did full-depth reclamation on Bill Carter Road, where we churned it up, and we added cement to it, so we got a really strong base. And then we put five inches of asphalt on top of that. At Interstate Paper, we've got, there's a lot of asphalt underneath what you see that's failing on the top. So, you know, to try to mill that all the way down and grind it and do something really becomes kind of problematic. So we worked with Whitaker Labs and did a lot of testing up and down the road, and we feel like that you probably mill the top layer to get something to connect to, and then build up and build our shoulders up. And just build the road up. That way, we can build it up gradually and keep the road operational as we go along. So I could go with a two-inch overlay, come back, two-inch overlay, and there's several inches I gotta put in there. But I can bring it up as I'm doing it and keep everything flowing and keep the trucks going.
Now, the last time we looked at Interstate Paper Road, I think, what were we at, Mr. Brown, about two point six?
Two point six, two point seven.
Two point six million?
Right at three, yeah.
Now, right now, we're at three point five.
Yeah, and what I did is I just pulled that old estimate, and I plugged in some of their newer numbers in there. So, and right now, I, I didn't spend a whole lot of time on it. I just said, okay, this, these numbers need to be jacked up, and right now, we're getting, we opened some proposals today in Midway and just have wide variety of prices on asphalt. So it's, it's kind of hard budgeting what you got, because you don't know the price you're actually gonna get when you bid it out.
Got one other question for you. I know this is not on here, Mr. Chairman. Bill Carter Road, they have put in the, I guess, the lurch strips coming up to eighty-four?
They got in today. They were there when I came through this afternoon.
But they're, they're still gonna put it on the other end next to Lewis Frazier?
They should be. Well, I was coming to town, so I noticed the rumble strips on the way to town. I'll go home tonight that way. Okay, but I'll, I'll work on that. So these are for your consideration. I think that I, before I skipped Interstate Paper, one road is, I talked about is Rogers Pasture Road. That's the road that goes back to the transfer station. And, you know, it's, it has heavy loads on it all the time. And that road is basically normal subgrade, eight inches of stone and two inches of asphalt. And it's been there since ninety-seven, ninety-eight. Yeah. Somewhere in that neighborhood. So with, with very, very little maintenance on there, so, you know, we're, we're approaching thirty years on that road with, well, twenty-five years on that road without any real repairs on it. So we, we really need to kind of start looking at that. Now, of course, this, these are suggestions I'm bringing to you guys. You guys ride your disc and, and represent your district, and if y'all will let me know items that you would like me to include, I'll be glad to get estimates for you and take care of whatever you'd like me to look at on that.
So the page that was, Jim Clip came from our previous priority list. Did I hear you correctly? Some big numbers on there.
Yes, they are some big numbers. Now, and the thing about it is, it's kind of like County Line Road. You know, County Line Road could be into the several million dollars if I tried to do it all at one time, because it's a really long road. But, you know, we almost kind of do like what we did with Lewis Frazier Road, where we bite it off in chunks. And we did that for what, three years?
Three years.
Yeah. And that's how we got where we are with Lewis Frazier Road. We have another section that we probably need to do on Lewis Frazier Road, but we need to wait until after the bridge gets done.
From the bridge to Bill Carter? Yeah, yeah.
My military friend would save them to make sure I'm tracking. Four twenty-seven, four fifteen is what we have L-MIC funds.
Correct.
And there's a thirty percent match required of that.
Right.
And of course, we still have within our, our arsenal, for lack of a better word, our splosh and our T-splosh funds to do projects. We just have, as a commissioner, I have to make the decision where to spend the L-MIC funds, am I right?
Yes, sir.
Brad, how, how thick is that asphalt on Bakentown Road, do you know? About an inch and a half?
I think there's, I haven't done a core out there. So there was an original paving of it that had probably about an inch, inch and a half. And I know it's been overlaid at least once. So there's probably just shy three inches on it. So you could see it in a couple of places when you go, when you ride through, you see how the top layer is sloughed off, and you see a little bit of asphalt underneath it. Some places it goes all the way through, but you can, you can see it. But I have not done a cord to see how much is there.
Let's do a core one and see how, how deep it is.
You're calling Bakentown Road. Is that still what they call EB Coop?
No.
No, that's the road that goes by the road department.
The road department, right on the other side of the complex. You cut, cut from eighty-four and go to seventeen and come up by the county shop.
Let me ask you another question. Me and you rode into McIntosh Lake when they were paving it. But that road had to be paved from eighty-four all the way down to the, the loop around Bright's Lake, wasn't that correct?
So what it does right now, the pavement goes down, it goes beyond Bright's Lake, and then where it takes a hard right to go back to McIntosh Lakes, where it takes a hard right is where it stops.
But your figure here of six hundred and ten thousand, that's gonna cover from eighty-four or just the curve?
So what will, what I was, you know, I made, what I have on that is the next section of dirt road section going back, that would go back from the end of the paving to the railroad tracks. So then you would have pavement that goes up and does the turn.
That would bring you up by Sanford Carter House.
Yes, sir.
Well.
We start getting into right-of-way issues when we make that turn back going to McIntosh Lake Road. As the first leg of the dirt road has been, being divided, I've tried to make a conscious effort with the people that are buying to say, hey, let's leave a, a strip so that there's a sixty-foot right-of-way for this roadway. So we're, we're trying to set it up so that getting that right-of-way, because there's only thirty-foot right-of-way there now, but that we can get it.
But there's no, is there, there's not a deceler lane there at it?
No, there's not a deceler lane there. We could go and move some of this to a deceleration lane, and even if you wanted to look at a right-turn lane off of McIntosh Lake Road, we could do that as well. It would be somewhat less than the six hundred thousand, but they're gonna be closer to twenty-four and five.
I'm just looking at, you know, with the, with the new homes that's gonna be in there, the deceler lane entered and exit is gonna be important there. And I don't want them, you, you would have traffic that might decide to wear the Bright's Lake Road out too, you know, and that's typically just been a neighborhood road. I don't think there's no issue with it. I mean, you cored it, and we went down there and looked at it, so.
Yes, sir. And I, I can revise the estimate to give you that as well.
We'll, we'll look at it. And then I wanted to ask another question. You were talking about the County Line Road in Commissioner Thrift's district. Now, is that gonna be working with Long County? Is the road ours?
So road is ours, and we paved it. The whole thing.
Didn't we get some help on that joint? Did the DOT come in there with a?
Yes. So years ago, when we paved it, Lynda was still here and working with it. And we did it in two sections. There's one section that's obviously narrower, but the section that starts way out at one ninety-six, that comes into Groover Road, then you skip a section and you go a little further down, and then you go all the way to Ry Pat Road, is what we did ninety-six timeframe. Lynda Grover was here when we did it. And we were getting a much different participation from DOT in the way the, the programs worked back then. If you got like eighty, we, we were, sometimes we were getting seventy percent participation from the state for these roadways. And, you know, we put thirty in, they put seventy in, we got eighty-foot right-of-way. Everything was sancti dori. But, you know, that, that's all changed.
Go back to the thing, but I was just wondering if it is our, our road then?
Yeah, the Long County Line comes in there in a couple of different places, but we, we maintain it, and we've been, we're the ones that paid.
Chairman, I did have a question for Mr. Long. On the, you said this is the twenty-four L-MIC?
Yes, ma'am.
The previous, you said we have three years?
Yes, ma'am.
So is there some funds, I guess, in L-MIC currently that we haven't spent?
Uh, we've pretty much, I mean, I hadn't spent years for Well Cemetery.
Right, okay.
But I, for everything else we put in last year, when we finish up Limerick Road, we will have finished all the projects on that list.
On the list from last, okay.
And so technically, we have, because DOT doesn't necessarily care which streets and how it went, but technically, we've already met our thirty percent cash match of last year's L-MIC. Just with, like, Bill Carter Road exceeded our cash match, that one project. So as far as DOT is concerned, I can close out my years, but I can carry yours forward for this, for, for in-house. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Samantha may not like me for saying that. Goes over here shaking his head.
All right, so you needed a decision from us?
I do not need a decision today.
Right, but when do you need a decision for that?
I would like to have it, if we could have it, regular meeting next month, it would be wonderful. I mean, the sooner the better, but you know. I, I don't, I don't want to make you feel rushed, and I want you to, you know, give us a good, you know, give us some good thought.
All right. Let's not wait commissions until the meeting, so let's have that conversation in between times and get others worked out. All right, sir, that's your report.
Yes, sir.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Um, you're going to hang around a while? Okay, thank you, sir. All right, uh, LCPC, Ms. Jeff Rickerson?
Chairman Levin, members of the commission?
Hello, sir.
We have four zoning actions tonight, they've all been advertised for public hearing. Uh, our first one, y'all need to go into a public hearing?
Okay, Chair and Tenon Bushing, go into public hearing. Second, all in favor, show your hands, please.
Okay, uh, Mr. Chairman, our first request is a conditional use request that's been submitted by the Clay Sykes Family LLC for a borrowed pit. Uh, this property is located off of Islands Highway all the way out to the end, before you get to Yellow Bluff on the right-hand side. Uh, you can see there the parcel, uh, number there, and it's in District One. There's the ad in the newspaper, uh, and the sign in front of the property, and there's, you see Islands Highway looking back toward, uh, Heinzville Midway. Uh, this is a vicinity map of the property, Islands Highway here, Kent Viking Road here. Uh, this is a hundred and sixty-five acres of property, this, the pit that they're proposing, uh, that they're asking for conditional use required before is over here in this bottom, uh, left-hand corner of that, of that property. This is the zoning map, all this property is zoned agricultural. And wetland map, there's a little bit of wetlands in the middle of the property, but most of it is uplands. Uh, project narrative, uh, this is, uh, Mr. Sykes is in the process of expanding an existing, uh, service, uh, pit on the property. Existing permit was, uh, permitted through the surface mining unit at the EPD. And, uh, that amendment, an amendment to the existing permit has been submitted to EPD for review and approval. And once this, um, once this surface borrow, uh, borrowed pit is complete, the pit will be turned into a pond, which will be an asset to the property. Access to the surface mine will be through an existing driveway located off of Islands Highway. And this is the, just the plan showing, as I described earlier, over in the, uh, lower-left corner of the property is where the, uh, expansion of the borrowed pit is, there's already some pit, uh, the existing pit is located up here a little bit closer to Islands Highway. And there's just some photographs from the site about two months ago, just showing, uh, the activity, what, what the borrowed pit currently looks like. Uh, you've got conditions in your ordinance that provides for, uh, your, your consider, for your consideration in considering a conditional use. Uh, number one, the use shall not adversely affect the economic values and physical appearance of the neighborhood and areas surrounding the site or lot in question. Uh, we answered, no, it will not. Number two, the use shall be consistent with a comprehensive plan and with the purpose and intent of the land used district. Uh, our answer there is yes. Number three, the establishment, maintenance, and operation of the use shall not be detrimental or endanger public health, safety, or general welfare. Our answer there is no. Number four, the use will not create an undue burden on transportation, streets, transit, schools, utilities, and public safety. Uh, we concluded it will not. Number five, the design shall minimize adverse effects on the environmental and physical effects of adjacent properties, including adverse visual effects, buffer zones where necessary to shield any adverse factor, factors shall be considered. And we just noted there that the existing buffer is proposed to be maintained. Number six, additional space for parking and landscaping adequate, uh, measures for ingress or egress shall be noted if necessary to protect adj, adjacent structures and lots from any adverse impact, and we have not noted any there. Planning Commission considered this over a period of two months, they considered it at their August meeting, and then they tabled it to give the applicant and the engineer time to address some of the concerns that were raised at the planning commission, at the August planning commission, uh, meeting. They took it back up again, uh, at their September nineteenth meeting, and they made a recommendation of approval to you with standard conditions. I'll be glad to answer any questions, and again, chairman, it has been advertised as a public hearing.
Thank you. Is the petitioner here or anybody from his, uh?
Yes, sir, I'll talk for him today. Um, I do want to kind of give you an update on a couple of things that have caught on. So they have already received approval of the expansion. And the narrative said it was, uh, in process, but that's been completed now. The, uh, majority of the issues that we're seeing, uh, come with, uh, activities that are occurring off the site. So the, the bar pit is being constructed. One of the issues that we have that's onsite is, uh, the construction exit. And the construction exit did get overwhelmed with dirt. Uh, we did receive a complaint, uh, that it was, uh, in need of replacement. Uh, we did, um, make a call to the owner and to the developer to replace the, uh, construction exit. They have ordered the, the stone. And I have not been out there in the last week and a half to observe and make sure that it's been replaced. But I know that the stone has been ordered to replace the, uh, construction exit to try to keep, uh, the dirt on the site. So at first, uh, they had a lot of trucks, and these are the guys that are hauling dirt out of this, or the guys that are building the warehouses, uh, off of Islands Highway up near I ninety-five. And they had a bunch of trucks running up and down the road. They were misbehaving pretty badly. Complaint was made. Mr. Paul Zuckman talked to the contractor, they did reduce the number of trucks, still a lot of trucks, but they did reduce the number of trucks pretty significantly to try to weed out some of the bad behavior trucks. The sheriff's department is going out there regularly to, uh, monitor the speed of the trucks. The motor vehicle division from DOT is going out there regular. I had talked to the, uh, captain that's in charge of the, uh, movement guys for DOT, and he said he had, he's had, uh, marked cars, unmarked cars, um, and private out there trying to monitor these trucks. And they, a couple, about a month ago, they hadn't had too terribly many, uh, incidents. They were, things had kind of calmed down. Now, we do get, uh, a lot of residents are sending, as they see issues. Um, they are, uh, sending texts to me or contacting Paul Zuckman. And, uh, what we're doing is we're passing them along to the contractor as quickly as we can. And, um, they do seem to be responding. I did get a, uh, uh, report yesterday from, uh, Tim Baller that they observed a black truck that was speeding excessively yesterday. So we've turned that into the contractor to kind of squelch that as well. Um, so what we're trying to do is make sure that the truck drivers are behaving. Another issue that, uh, happens is dirt falling off the trucks. You know, do they put the tarp up all the time? No, um, we're getting much more compliance with dirt on the tarp, but. We were talking about truck drivers that sometimes forget to put the tarp up. Sometimes the dirt's coming from the bottom of the truck. Uh, the contractor has, uh, agreed to, uh, put sweepers out there, so he has two sweepers, one on either side of the project. And he is sweeping regularly. So the road's staying pretty clean. Now, it does get dirty sometimes, but they're right behind it, cleaning it. Paul Zuckman is monitoring it daily, um, and I talk to him usually once or twice a week about how it's going to make sure that there's not anything I need to do with my contact with the subcontractor to try to kind of keep it, uh, in check. Now, early on when this started, um, we know of several dips that are in Islands Highway. Um, so before it really got to be a real problem, uh, we sent our survey crews out there and we measured the dips in the road so that we could go back when we find other dips, is this a dip we had before, or is this dip worse? That way we have quantitative, uh, measurements, say, okay, we found it here, and the dip was X amount of inches deep. And when we go back after this is done, the dip is however much more, or, you know, we can prove what we had or didn't have. The contractor has agreed in several places where the asphalt is fa, failing to, uh, go out there and install some asphalt. Uh, the road department did put some asphalt out there, and that was the road department that did that. Yes, sir. And that was the road department, that was not the contractor. But he is, we're making coordinations with him to do some of that soon. So I don't have a date that that's going to occur yet, but we'll, we're working on getting that worked out. We even got a complaint through, uh, Commissioner Stevens that, uh, Dorchester Village Road, the existing road was not, uh, being maintained properly and was impassable. Um, and I think the contractor has a tractor and a box blade, and that is all that that person does all day long is blades off Dorchester Village Road to keep it passable. So, you know, my guys went out in there and looked at it last week, and they said it was passable and was doing good. So if you get any more complaints, please let me know. So, um, the contractor's doing a pretty good job of trying to be responsive to the complaints. Are the truck drivers going to behave a hundred percent all the time? No. But, you know, we can do everything we can to try to help keep it under control. And, you know, I understand, you know, citizens have a right to be safe. And, you know, they need to, uh, when they have, see something that's going on, they are letting us know. And are trying to make sure we get it taken care of. That was long-winded.
Yep, it's going to get longer.
Uh, okay.
Trent, Mr. Chairman. I heard you say that you have an agreement with the contractor, is this in writing or verbal?
It's verbal right now.
We need something in writing.
I'll work.
When that contractor gets through, and they say bye-bye, we don't have anything to hold them to.
Yes, sir.
I like to see something in black and white.
Okay.
Because so at the rate the taxpayers of Liberty County won't have to be the one to foot the repair of that road.
Yes, sir.
Now, we talk about the coming out of, from the, the mining pit. But going into where they're putting the warehouses and Dorchester Village Road, we're coming out, bringing dirt back onto the highway. So we need to get that contractor to consider rocking.
Yes, sir, we've asked them, yes, sir, we've asked them to repair their, uh, construction exit as well.
Okay.
But, but, yes, sir, and, and I agree with you.
Yes.
I agree with you.
Okay. That's, uh, apparently you got the same email that I got. So it looks like you've looked at, looked into everything, and I will be paying visits down there unannounced, as usual? To see what?
And, and that's, that's what, and, and I'll do the same thing. You know, I send, I got a retired DOT guy, I send out there weekly randomly. And then I try to go out there randomly as well, just to look at it.
And I just want to say this, Mr. Chairman, to everyone who has sent me an email, I just want you to know that your email is not being overlooked, regardless if you're sitting in the audience now or not, your email is not being overlooked. We are, I am going down, I know myself and taking a look. Cause one day I got an email, one hour, and one hour after that, I went down there and videoed the whole road. And, uh, it was in good shape about one hour after the email was sent. So that was some quick response, yes.
So, Mr. Chairman, I, I had a, a couple of questions. Uh, the, the main entrance, I guess, is, is off of Islands, is there another road in and out? An, uh, entrance and exit, or just made off?
So I know we're kind of diverging away from the, the zone.
Right, yeah.
So the, the, um.
Is zoning is for the?
Zoning is for the bar pit.
Right.
So the, the, the main issue that we have with the bar pit, and it's kind of, I'm trying to bring it all back to the rezoning. Cause we had, we, we needed to tackle this traffic issue.
We did.
So, you know, we can't just ignore the traffic issue because it is being generated somewhat by this. So, um, yes, the, uh, construction is, if it's not already fixed, should be fixed. And we have put them on notice to fix, and I, I did it, uh, in writing.
Right.
So we're, we're in good shape there.
Okay.
Um, so that's coming along. Now, um. There was one other thing that I was going to say, that I've, I've, I've lost what I was going to say.
Come back to you tomorrow.
Yes, sir, it will. Yes, sir.
So he currently has a bar pit there?
Right.
Yes, ma'am.
And this is a rezoning for another?
That's what it was, no, this, so what happened was in two thousand eighteen, um, it was permitted through the state. And the way the state's permit process was, it didn't prompt us to check the zoning. And so permits issued, we start work, and then all of a sudden we find out, oh, wait a minute. We didn't get the conditional use when we got the permit. And that's why we're here today instead of before, is we found that we didn't get the conditional use back in two thousand eighteen when we should. So we're trying to get everything back in order. So that's kind of where we are here, why we're here, why we are here today.
What can we do to prevent that from happening in the future?
So we've done a pretty good job of kind of closing that loop with our ordinances. And actually, you'll have another one next week that's a permitted bar pit that's been permitted for years, um, that is in the same situation. Um, it's actually mostly complete, um, but they want to reactivate it, and, uh, it's never been closed out. But they don't have a, a conditional use on theirs as well, so trying to make sure that we get a handle on the unauthorized bar pits, surface mines. Now, we're going to find more as we go along, that just because the way the surface mine permits were written, that step gets stepped, skipped a good bit. And it did a lot in the past. But, but we're trying, we're trying to make sure we don't, but that, and I think when, uh, LCPC rewrote the, uh, UDO, they did a pretty good job making sure that that's a requirement for the operation of surface mine.
So the one that's to follow has been identified with, have we looked at others too? I mean, I can't imagine we have fifty bar pits in Liberty County, so.
There's a lot of bar pits now.
Functioning?
Some, some of them are functioning, some of them are not.
I'm really concerned about the functioning one, yeah.
So you've got several that are kind of coming along, you, you'll have several that are coming through, like a couple of months ago. Uh, Jody Pittman did one, came through here, and then we had, uh, Melissa Ray and Barry Ray did a couple. You know, those, we got it on upfront.
Yeah.
Um, so, but I, I, I know there's probably a couple more that are throughout the county that are semi-functioning or not functioning that, uh, there are a couple that were functioning that were not even permitted through the state, and I think that's been stopped or slowed down. Trying to get a good handle on it.
Yeah, I got one other question for you. On his water, I'm quite sure he hit some springs or wells or whatever you call it. Is he maintaining that on the site, or is he pumping it off?
So he has a, uh, and he's required to by his permit to have a sediment basin. And so he pumps from the rim ditch into a sediment basin where the water sits still, and then it's discharged into, uh, the land, the, the low areas on his land adjacent.
His land?
On his land.
Not on the one else?
Not on, not on, not on the Islands Highway, not on anything that the county is maintaining.
Let, let me go back, I just need to feel comfortable, so, with this application, so were it not for him, but this becoming, well, it's been an active bar pit, but it's more active, obviously. So that's what triggered the, the need for the rezoning?
The activity kind of raised the flag, hey, do we have a permit on this? Actually, uh, Ms. Rickerson called me one afternoon and said, Trent, we got a problem. This, we have an unpermitted bar pit going on, and I was like, no, he has a permit. So I was able to get him the permit, and he did the digging and said, you know, we never got the conditional use. So we immediately applied for the conditional use.
I think.
This is bringing it back in compliance.
Bring it back in compliance, yes, sir.
Let's make sure we do that on all the active ones especially, you know, those that are dormant, I guess, a whole different story, but those that are active, let's make sure, and I know this one stands out because, you know, I know since my tenure here, I've never known a project with had that many dump trucks coming in and out of a project, so this is a little bit unprecedented for us. And brought to light some, uh, concerns that the citizens haven't, and very, uh, points that we'll take.
Very reasonable.
They are reasonable, that's, that's the word, they are reasonable. They are reasonable, that's, that's the word, they are reasonable. So let's make sure now, there's a lot of policing, obviously, that I didn't think we were gonna get into. But obviously, the requirement's there because once these companies or these trucks get rolling, they, their only mindset is hauling this dirt. Now about the.
So as a matter of fact, I had a conversation with Tim Baller yesterday. He's the one that called me and told me about the black truck that was speeding. He said while he was there, he did see a state patrolman patrolling, and he did see the motor vehicle division from DOT out there. So he was able to see that there are enforcement agencies out there. But, you know, they can't see every truck every time.
No. But putting that tarp on every load should be mandatory. You have an option or not to.
Well, it, it really is. And if they get caught that way, you know, then they get a ticket. And so there, there are state regulations as far as the truckers go. Some of these things that they're doing, they shouldn't be doing, because if they get caught, truck driver gets penalized. So, you know, we, we've gotten complaints from them going too fast. We've got complaints from them going too slow. We've got complaints of dirt on the road, then we've got complaints that the sweeper's in the way. And, you know, we get complaints on either side, but every complaint, we try to pass through.
And I know you had some conversation, but the owner of that company has an obligation
They do.
to the general public. Not just about him and his company making money, you know, hauling dirt. It's also about the citizens who we, who use that road, who had to share that road with them, so.
Yes, sir.
And I'm sorry we have to keep policing them this way, but obviously, it's required because if it had not been done, we would have a mess. And unlike Commissioner Stevens, we don't want them to create a mess and then walk away from it. It's not our responsibility, nor is it the citizen's responsibility. So once again, I see a lot of policing that has to go on for this. And, and I am concerned about the, um, the condition of that road after they're done, you know.
Yes, sir.
You just gave some quotes about what it costs to do resurfacing.
Yes, sir. Well.
And it's not cheap.
Just so you know, Island's Highway was on the bad list to begin with before we even got into this.
Yeah.
It's gonna be worse. Now, one other question, Mr. Chairman, Trent, before we vote on this. You're talking about doing the box cover.
Yes, sir.
At, by the leaning tree. If the trucks are still in operation then, what kind of problem is that going to create?
They're gonna have to go really slow, because what'll end up happening, where the change we're looking at is gonna move them a little further over, but we will still have to have the traffic lights where there'll be one-way traffic. We'll, we'll stop it on this side, and this cars can go, and after they're done, then these cars can go, kind of like what we had on retreat, on retreat bridge.
Right.
It'd be very similar to that. So that will significantly slow things down in the middle.
And back traffic up. Chairman, I really like a motion on this.
All right.
But, but I think you still have.
We do have.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we do have. You still got, you still got more people to talk to.
That's right, that's right, that's right.
Don't just talk to me.
We've had some good conversation. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak to?
Mr. Chairman, I've heard a lot of talking here this evening, and a little bit, Mr. Stevens says that the road issue, and of course Trent and I looked at the old Sunberry Road, the old Heinz Road, I mean, when they're cutting timber in there, we can't do anything. I mean, well, there's nothing you can do. It's a dirt road, and we've got to send, you know, usually if you can get a hold of the people cutting the timber, they'll go in there and try to straighten it out. But if not, it falls back on us. Now, I understand that the issue with the road and all, but, I mean, right now, we just, this is just to permit the, the pit.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. But this, uh, this issue with these roads is going to constantly be, um, something that, I mean, the man digging or a gutted land to get his product off of there is, you know, I just want us to, you know, we gotta all remember that ain't his fault, because if he's selling tractor-trader loads of corn or tractor-trader loads of shrimp, getting it down that highway is gonna be the, whoever the carrier is, their responsibility. So all we're dealing with now is, like you said, the, the permitted, right?
That's correct.
Is that, is that what it is, Joe?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's all.
Just want to make sure, I'm a little bit.
Well, it, it is, but, but what, what Trent was, was responding to was the outcry from citizens about the condition of the road.
Yeah, I was getting those same emails too, but I, I mean, I was wondering if this was, he's already hauling now and has been hauling, so this will permit it to make it be in compliance?
Yes, sir.
I got you, I got you.
That's where we are.
Mr. Chairman, there were two people that signed up to speak on that. The first one's Miss Rhonda Durney.
Yeah, Miss Durney? Thank you, Mrs. Brown. I didn't know you had done your sign-up sheet. I'm just gonna call them at random.
I know this is indirectly associated, like with what all of you have been talking about, about the road and, and those types of things. It's gotten better because instead of about four hundred runs a day, we're down to about a hundred. But nobody appreciates, especially me and my neighbors who live right on Island's Highway, the fact that he's running that, opening that pit at six AM in the morning and being awakened up by the trucks roaring down the road at six AM. And they are still roaring. Yes, it's better, but there are a lot of them that are still speeding. And I don't know if you, any of you can check on it, who would be responsible. There are two black trucks in particular. Not only are they speeding, but the spew that's coming out of their exhaust is unbelievable. I don't even feel that, I mean, they should even be on the road in the conditions that those two vehicles are in. I don't know if there's anything you can do with that, but I will tell you, myself included, and a number of my neighbors, I know you disagree with me, but that's okay. That's what we're here about, about all the substances coming out of these, these, these trucks. Because you go out to work in your yard, and you're getting where you can't breathe, getting headaches, getting sick to your stomach, and it's from all the spew coming from the trucks. I mean, we have to be honest about it. I mean, there's, there's everything from, from metals to benzene, arsenic, formaldehyde, nitrogen oxides, they're all coming out of those trucks. And I did some research because I'm thinking, okay, well, when can you go outside? Maybe we can work with that. Takes twenty-four hours for that to dissipate. So if you think you're talking Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, he's running from six AM to six PM. I cannot imagine the, the chemicals and, and the nasty things that are in the air by Saturday evening. Something really needs to be done. The number of the trucks need to be kept low. Those times need to be changed. It's ridiculous to be awakened every day at six AM by these trucks roaring down the road. And I will tell you, early in the morning, they're roaring, and they're speeding. So hopefully, something can be done with that. And the other thing, and I wanted to mention, and maybe Mr. Stevens can help out that, we desperately need sidewalks out there, even if they aren't real sidewalks. I mean, widen it, flatten it out there a bit, and, and, um, you know, even put some mulch or something on, there's nowhere to walk. And even when you go out to your mailbox now, because the trucks, I was stood out there for an hour and a half the other day, seeing how many, they're driving clear over on the white lines. I mean, it's like you take your life in your hands when you walk out of your house. And, you know, this is because the pit's down there. I don't know if there are any conditions, you know, how many, how many vehicles are allowed to come out of there, you know, within an hour, or, or how that works or anything. It's already been mentioned, you know, the trucks that are coming out of Blue, they don't even slow down when they pull out of there. I don't know if you've watched them, but like if people, if you're coming from Heinzville and trying to come home, they just, right out of there. They don't slow down at all. And when it's set up there, oh, it has no dangers to health, it's extremely dangerous out there. Not only because of the trucks, but because these trucks are coming out there like that. People are infuriated that there's so many trucks, so people are going around the trucks. And, you know, an extra lane, I mean, it's, I don't know what the solution is, but somehow, you know, things need to be, need to be changed a bit. And I don't know whether, you know, everybody needs to get together, including the people that live out there, because we're the ones that are getting the brunt of this. We all moved out there to live in, you know, a nice, quiet little area. Nobody ever mentioned to us that these trucks were coming. I wish they had. Because I would've spent the money to get a whole house filled, because honestly, it's horrible. Even in this heat, I've not even turned my air conditioning on, because I don't even want the air coming in my house. So I hope there's something that can be done. It sounds like, you know, Trent's been working with some of it, and things are getting a little bit better. But seriously, the six AM, six PM thing, that's, that's a bit much to expect for, for residents that are, that are living there. And I really wish you would check the trucks, because I don't think some of those are anywhere near meeting the proper conditions to be on the road. I mean, the other day, I had one going past my house, and the back of his truck fell off. If you had a car that was in that condition, you wouldn't be driving it down the road. And the trucks are still being overloaded. You look at where they have the tarps on them, you know, it's way, the dirt's way up over the top, the top of there. So anything you people can do, and seriously, consider doing something for a sidewalk. I know there's probably not money for the cement and those types of things, but, you know, my great-granddaughter has to stand right there on the edge of Island's Highway to get the bus, and here's the trucks, as fast as they can, and so close together. I mean, it really is dangerous, so. And I know all of you got the email from Marcy Hamilton about some other things, you know, that we were asking for. And I know there's a little bit more police presence, but there really needs to be more too. So anything you can help us with, greatly appreciate. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Chairman, the next person is Miss Donna Rushing.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Gosh, I admit, and I'm, I'm terribly confused. And I just recently got confused. My name is Donna Rushing, and I live at seventeen Ashley Creek Drive. And I hope each of you were in receipt of a letter I sent September twenty-seventh explaining my opposition to, I thought this was not only a conditional approv-, um, conditional.
A good conditional use?
Use, use. I, I also thought there was some, I was under the impression it was gonna be enlarged. Is that wrong?
What now?
What now?
That you were going for a joint to get the conditional use, and Clay wanted to enlarge the pit?
That's, that is, that.
Extended. That's the conditional use.
Is that in this, or that was a separate thing?
So the conditional use is by the state. That's completely.
Uh, yeah, I gotcha.
The condition of the.
No, the permission.
The expansion.
Expand.
The state, and then that's approved, and the condition of use is.
So, yes, okay. It is true that this pit has been down in our area for a good number of years, operating. This isn't a new pit to, to us folks down there. We've known about it. It's never been a problem. It was used for, um, it was just be, being used for their private business practices and, and they were doing minimal, minimal damage and no safety concerns. They've been running it, the Sykes family entity. But something changed. And this current contract that's going on down there is massive in scope. And future warehouse contracts are in the horizon. This is not gonna stop. We're not gonna go back to the, hey, you need a, some dirt for your landscape, or you're clearing your lot, or whatever. This, this is morphed into something a little bit beyond that. I feel like maybe what I wrote to present is not gonna be quite applicable, but I'll try to hurry through it. I'm not gonna read the letter that I sent you guys, and I hate to regurgitate old, old stuff, but, um, just, I want to say that beginning at the I-95 interchange and heading east to its end of Yelman's Road, Island's Highway is a county-maintained, two-lane rural road. And I'm not sure if, if it has, has a GDOT service level rating, or even if the Georgia Department of Transportation rates county-maintained roads. I, I, I don't know, but this I do know. Island's Highway was not built for and has never been maintained to be an industrial thoroughfare capable of handling an excess of a hundred dump trucks daily loaded with field dirt. For nine mile, approximately nine miles, this operation, Mr. Sykes' operation, uses the only road east of I-95 interchange that's available to residents who live towards Sunberry and beyond. So, so we're, we're pretty stuck. I mean, we're, we're pretty stuck here. In May of 2023, which is this, this year, WTOC published an article highlighting the repair and the reconstruction of the two and a half miles of Island's Highway that's gonna go from ninety-five to Brigden Road. And that will be once the industrial warehouses are completed. In that article, the county reported having an approved contract with Mr. Long, T.R. Long, for an estimated $25 million to take place over the span of four years. It was also reported that that project would be partially funded by SPOSH money in combination with bond issuance and developer agreements. However, at the September fifteenth meeting of the LCPC, Mr. Long stated developer agreements were still being worked on. Do we have developer agreements in place? And also, now, what is Liberty County's plan for road repair needed for the remaining seven miles past Brigden Road, which will include replacing a failing culvert, which alone has been estimated at around $4 million? So if I use the approved contract numbers to Brigden Road as a rough estimate and a rough guide, this stretch of road, this last seven miles past Brigden Road to the end, to Mr. Sykes's entrance, could easily be in excess of a million dollars. At some, maybe not at one time, but even if it's done in sections. Liberty County citizens can't bear this. They cannot or should not. This, this is misuse of our infrastructure by developers, some contractors, and material suppliers. I don't know who else to blame. So I respectfully request, before you guys grant any, I thought it was a new permit, but any new permit or any expansions or extensions of existing permits, I urge you to exercise Liberty County's jurisdiction over county-maintained roads and place concessions on these surface mining operations in hopes to of deterring further damage. Please include and do not limit concessions to mandatory weigh scales before the, the trucks get on the road, mandatory tarping, improvements to the exit pad onto the road or tire washing, however you want to put it, enhanced police presence, continued dust mitigation, and limiting the work hours and the days of the week. Saturday is kind of a tough day. We're not gonna be able to make the truckers do better. It's just not. Truckers are out there making a living. They're, they're using this eight-mile stretch. That's a pretty good gig. Come from a background very similar, and they get paid by the load, and they've got, from picking it up to the job sites, eight miles, they can, they are turning it around. They don't want to stop to tarp. They don't want to stop to weigh. They're riding down the middle of the road now, because the sides have gotten wonky. So now, if there's no one coming, um, you know, it's not unusual to get behind one, and he's riding down the middle of the road. until a car starts coming at him, and then he'll get over and then go back in the middle of the road because the road's bumpy and knock your teeth out, knock your fillings out of your teeth. Truckers are going to do whatever they've got to do. It's just, we just need to do the best we can do to do with it, so. I just, please consider that, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm the next person. Ms. Chairman is Ms. Ashley Moser.
Hi, Commissioners. Have y'all missed me?
Hello.
So, Ashley Moser, we've been here before. So, I have a question. When, I understand this is a conditional use permit and we're getting our Ts dotted, our Is dotted, and Ts crossed, right? That we know that this is, okay? I did understand that it was for an expansion, is what I also understood in some of the information that was given out. So, but my question is, the establishment maintenance or operation of the use shall not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare, and the answer of the LPCP said was no. Is that just for that plot? Just that, when you answer that question, it just pertains to that plot of land, that plat?
It applies to the whole hundred sixty-five acre tract of land that's big, all the phases.
Okay, so that question doesn't have anything to do with them exiting onto the highway or anything? When you answered that question, it was just for that plot?
That's right. We're not talking about eight miles down the road.
Road or anything else. It's just what happens on that piece of property? Okay, that clears up a lot for a lot of people who are wondering, like, it does, it does, it is detrimental. But remember, I've stood here before you many, many times and said, this is going to cause problems. You know, Island's Highway wasn't made for this. And we didn't do a very good job pre-whenever, when Target and all that went in, of making sure that big trucks and things. And now we're going to put, what, two more warehouses and a gas station and a little strip mall and all those things that we have that are going in down there to keep up, and we haven't thought about all the other things that we're doing. So we're building this foundation, but we're leaving some gaps in the brickwork. You know, extra policing. And it's taken a cry from the community who gathered together and said, we're not really sure you want this. We're not really sure. But remember, it was just a zoning action when I first stood here and said, I don't think this is a good idea. And now we're talking about millions of dollars we're going to have to do to maintain and to update to keep up. And I understand, I understand that the economy moves forward and we have to keep up, and I'm all for Liberty County doing that. I live here. I love this county. I love where we live. But we're running into a lot of problems, and it seems like all I can see are tax dollars. And all I can think other people are seeing are tax dollars and the detriment you're doing to our beautiful, to our beautiful county. So, that's all I wanted to know was about the plat thing, because that's kind of disturbing when you see that and you're like, it does, it affects us. It affects me every day, getting out, going to the grocery store, getting out, trying to turn into my house. And there was a period of time where I would wait till dark because I knew that I could turn out onto the highway without having to think, can I get in front of that dump truck? Do I have enough space, or is he coming at eighty-five miles an hour? Well, I make it that turn in time. And what's really frightening is to see two school buses sandwiched, you know, sandwiched in between dump trucks, and they are just pushing him down the road with a bus full of kids. So, seeing that. So, it has gotten better. Thank you, Mr. Long. Thank y'all for listening to what the people are telling you, hey, this is going on. I understand with any project, there's going to be problems. And like you said, truck drivers are going to do what truck drivers do. They're making a living too, and I'm not against anybody that. But, you know, we're having to go back and dot our Is and cross our Ts because this stuff got missed. So what else have we missed that we need to go back and look at and slow down? Because remember in the beginning, that's all we were asking y'all to do was slow down before you consider this, and here we are. And I will say, at my end of the road, I don't even go out the other end of Dorchester now because you can't get through there, not because the road is terrible or whatever. There's just too much traffic, too many other cars. The amount of garbage has increased. You know, people coming in and out. The amount of cars that come down and stop right there has also increased. You know, stopping, people working there, whatever, or even coming off ninety-five to see what's going on and that kind of stuff. So, and on Friday afternoons, man, let me tell you, between Target leaving and that shift change and those truck drivers and stuff, it's chaotic. It's chaotic. So, that's what we're dealing with. So I want y'all to understand that. Because you sit here, it was just a zoning change, and this is where we're at now. Looking at that. So let's be proactive, not reactive, because right now we're being reactive. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The last person, Ms. Chairman, is Mr. Tommy Carter.
Mr. Carter.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
I was looking for some clarification on Commissioner Stevens' question as to where the millions of gallons of discharge is going from out of the pit. Because we're going to have years of discharge. Is it all going to stay on that property?
Eventually, it will run off across Sykes' property, more Sykes' property, through.
But it's not going in the canal now, going into Van Dyke into the salt marsh?
It will eventually. It all goes somewhere, somewhere, but.
But you said while it goes, all being sent right on to Clay Sykes' property, and it will stay in there?
It is.
And it's staying there?
It goes here and sits there until it builds up until there's a discharge from Clay's property.
It'll go through a trust fund. So what he's expressing there is that once it maximizes what it can hold on Clay's land, it's going to go through a piece of property that's set up by Bobby Sykes in a trust fund for his grandchildren, which is going to flood their land. I just have some concerns about that. And then eventually, it's going into our salt marsh. And that's acidic water, from what I understand, coming out the bottom of these pits, because it burns the propellers out of the pumps trying to keep up with getting the water out. I think more research needs to be done before you grant all this. You're talking about millions of gallons, not just a hundred thousand gallons and millions. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Chairman, I have one more question. LCPC's been looking at it all for a couple months, one of the ladies said, and we still don't have everything signed in place? I thought you said there was some, something else that, I mean, he got the approval from the state for the expansion. And I thought there was something else you said that you were working on it. Just this, or?
Yes, I mean, this is the remaining permitting stat that needs to happen in order for the pit to be, have all the state and local requirements that it needs. The development agreements that were talked about here were something that y'all approved back in February, I think, and those are going to be assessed to all the warehouses that are going to be, that are being built. That'll help pay for the first three miles of the road.
Yeah.
And that has been, excuse me, that has been taken care of. That's been documented and signed?
The development agreements will, they'll be executed before a occupancy permit is issued.
Or the guy down there by I ninety-five, not this, not this development.
That's correct.
Well, this landowner is not
No.
No, ma'am.
Part of that.
No.
No, ma'am.
Why, why wouldn't he be part of that?
Does that place the burden on the building inspector? Because he will hold the final certificate by.
That's correct. So before the CO is issued, the developer has to sign the agreement, or he won't be able to occupy the premises. County building inspector along with myself and the county attorney, right.
Yeah. What was the vote, what was the vote at LCPC on this? Unanimous, uh, split?
Trying to remember. I think it was unanimous. They, there was some, there was, they were split the first time. That's why they tabled it. But I think it was unanimous at the September nineteenth meeting.
I think so. I think so.
Yeah. I've heard this, we beat this, beat this horse and beat this horse. I'm at a point now with some questions that Mr. Tommy Carter just asked. I'd like to maybe table this until I can get with Mr. Long and we get a full answer on the question that because we don't want to pump any water on no one else's property in the long run.
Come on, then, Trent. I don't like getting in the family business.
And this is all?
And generally, we've been down the road before.
I don't want, I don't want to talk.
See, this is where it fits. And he's discharging into a wetland area that's a large wetland area here, several times the size of the pit itself.
That's the wetland, the green.
Yeah. Get back on the phone. So you have these drainage canals that drain the wetlands in the area that connect to the wood, that the quarter top of that is this piece of top of it right here, where it drains through, and eventually it makes it over into the main body. It kind of all sits in these wetlands right out here for a really long time before it actually does make it to the marsh. So, but what he has on his plan, can you get back to my drawing that I have? Soon as it all this, we're not. He has a basin that he's supposed to be discharging into. There is a sediment basin, and another thing they do is they have a rim ditch where they have a deep trench around the outside where the water goes and sits in the trench so that the sediment can fall out, so that they're not, we're limiting the amount of sand that's leaving the site. But it is discharging into these wetlands, and then it leaves via the existing drainage system that you see in the area photographs that have been there for questions.
That's, that's what happens.
But I'll be glad to talk to you more about it or whatever you'd like to do.
So it's going to flood my children's property. Those ditches are blocked. Those ditches were dug by Gil Sykes years ago without permits.
We don't need to get into back and tood things, gentlemen.
It's going to flood our land.
My only comment, and even the state has oversight of this, they will do inspections from time to time?
Yes, so they do, they do do periodic inspections. I don't know how often they do them. For a while, they were making annual trips when the pit in Flemington was going on. They were coming down about annually to take a look at the pit. Now, since COVID, a lot of that has changed, and the timeframe, I don't know how often they come.
All right. Yeah. I make a motion that we go ahead and grant the conditional use. Thank you, Trent, Mr. Long, for addressing the other issues roadway, which is not involved, but it is connected. So that these issues get corrected, carried out, and enforced.
So I make a motion.
Thank you, sir. A second.
I'm second in motion.
Motion and second, and we approve the recommendation that's presented. Any further discussion?
I just have, I guess, just a quick question. First of all, apologize for my tardiness. I was, I had another obligation that I had to take care of, but because of our technology upgrade, I was able to stay abreast of the meeting at the same time. But from the citizen's standpoint, the majority of the concern is about the public safety, the trucks, and, I mean, again, we've had this discussion for plenty years now, you know, especially with Island's Highway and everything that's going out there. So I just want to ask my fellow commissioners as well, what can we do to satisfy and try to appease those citizens from the public safety standpoint? I understand that the Sheriff Department is, you know, trying to do what they can. And also, when they were talking about the trucks not being covered, that's a GDOT, is that correct? Is there any way possible we could reach out to GDOT to make sure that?
Kind of just about, just before you walk.
Yeah, he talked about it.
Yes, sir. I've talked to the captain about that at least twice.
Right. I just want to make sure that that was being addressed because, I mean, I think everyone knows how I feel about economic development. I'm all about that, but more importantly, you know, the safety of our citizens, especially our youth.
I agree.
Is, you know, I would, I don't think anyone in this room wants to see anything happen like that. So whatever we could do to make sure of that, because that, and that's something that we do need to look at to be proactive, because that growth is right there. I mean, whenever we approve that first warehouse, you know? And I was here and I, and I said it then, that, hey, we need to look at the infrastructure and everything that's going out there, so. I think, you know, Commissioner Stevens, we need to do whatever we can to help appease that out there and make sure that, first of all, public safety is number one before economic growth. And let's just make sure.
That's been the heart of the conversation prior to your coming, sir.
Yeah, well, I'm putting a rubber stamp on it. I don't want it just to be a conversation. I want to be some action behind it, because we.
Drawing the bandwagon and coming.
Yeah, sir, that's what we've been talking about. Yeah, we talk a lot now. I just want to make sure that we have some action behind it.
All right. We have a motion and second. All in favor, show your hands, please, on the floor. In opposition? One, okay. Motion passes. Twenty twenty-three zero six-two.
Mr. Chairman.
Still public hearing?
Yes, sir. Our second conditional use request has been submitted by Ms. Carrie G. World and Adeline G. Nelson on behalf of the Ben Golden Estate, which is the owner of the property, for a family cemetery. And family cemeteries are allowed by conditional use from the Board of Commissioners. This property is zone A-one agricultural, and it contains four point six-four acres, plus or minus, and is located off of Homestown Road. And as you'll see, property is landlocked, and it's accessible only by easements. And you can see there the parcel number there on the bottom, and this is also in District One. That's our sign and our ad in the Coastal Courier. The access is through the parking lot of the church. I think it's called Saint James Community Church and Sports Complex there, and that's where our sign is located. See, here's Homestown Road. The church is located here. You have to go through, I'm sorry, these lines aren't a little bit better that you can see, but you have to go across through an easement across several properties to get to this four-point-eight acre piece of property down in here. It's a agriculturally zoned property, and they just want to do a family cemetery on. It won't be a public cemetery. And this shows up a little bit better. Again, the easement comes down through the church's property, through this property, and then these properties down to the area that you see outlined in red, which is the subject property where they'd like to do the family cemetery. And this is the plat just showing, it's kind of turned sideways here, but you can just see, here's Homestown Road. You can see how the road kind of, the dirt road kind of goes back in there, snakes in. These are, these are the two easements that you see there on that piece and that piece, allowing them to get across to their four-point acre tract of land where they'd like to do the family cemetery. Erative, this is from the applicant. They said they're the family of Ben Golden Senior. They wish to use this property, this four point six-four acres as a family cemetery, and the sign there, the children of Charles Golden, Adeline Nelson, Carrie World, and Sylvia Williams. And of course, as with the other conditional uses, these are the conditional, the criteria that you have to use. Again, we did not find any adverse impacts on the economic values or physical appearance of the surrounding areas. Number two, this use is consistent with the comprehensive plan and with the purpose of the land use district. Number three, this will not be detrimental or endanger the public health in any way, the safety or general welfare. Number four, this will not create. Number four, this will not create an undue burden on transportation, streets, schools, utilities and other public safety. Number five, uh, we haven't identified any impacts, uh, any adverse impacts that this will have on the surrounding properties. And number six, we haven't noted any, uh, any needs for additional measures, uh, to, to protect, uh, surrounding properties for adverse impact. Um, the planning commission heard this at their September nineteenth meeting and they recommend approval with standard conditions. I, I do think, uh, the applicant is here to speak tonight as well.
Okay, applicant, please come forward. We heard the presentation, but sometimes we allow it, not sometimes. The applicant is, is, uh, eligible to make any statement they want to make about, about the request. You don't have to make a long speech, just kinda tell us. Give your name if you will please first and then start the talking.
Hello.
Good evening.
Hello.
I am Adeline Nelson.
I'm Carrie World. And on behalf of our, the Ben Golden Senior family, we wanna say thank you for agreeing to, um, permit us to, to do this. As you, uh, many of you may know, we have a very large family.
No.
Very large. As, as the young people today, they don't consider things like this, you know, in their future. So, you know, you have to have somebody to stand up for them. So we just appreciate, you know, your, uh, agreeing to, um, accommodate us in this matter.
A consideration, okay. Yes, ma'am.
Been one of y'all, just got one. Have y'all already gained permission to, for the roadway to go in? Or the roadway is already there?
He said it's an easement.
Ease way.
Easement. He said they have an easement.
Yes, we do have one. Uh, we wanted to make sure that we have the approval.
Okay.
Before we take the next step.
Okay, okay.
Anybody, was anybody in oppo- I'm sorry. Was anybody in opposition, Jeff?
We had, we had calls on it, but, uh, it was just.
Okay, probably all family in the house.
Yeah, under the old, uh, ordinance, it would, wasn't it during that time it was requiring, what, four acres, five acres for a cemetery? Under the old one?
I don't think you required that much, it just, it always required a conditional use approval.
And then under the new one now, it's only requiring one acre.
And that's, that's four and a half, right?
Section three oh two dash four. Okay, alright.
Alright.
I guess the only question I have is, is, is that enough land for, for the entire family?
It's more than enough.
Are you sure? I don't, I don't know now.
As far as we know right now.
Dishes are coming, I'm sure.
Did somebody else have that?
Yeah. We just wanna take care of the noun and someone else can add.
There you go.
Yes, sir, Chair and take a motion.
I make a motion that we, uh, file a recommendation of LCPC approval.
Second.
Motion and second, we approve LCPC's recommendation for the Ben Golden family, have I got it right?
Exactly.
For this, uh, family cemetery. Looking out for this generation and future generations. After that, they're on their own. Any further discussion? All in favor, show your hands please. Alright, you know, ladies, it's approved.
And then thank you sir very much.
That did not take long.
Yeah, I don't like touching funerals.
Rural Golden, what's, what's Rural Golden to you, are same family?
Same family, my.
Rural Golden. Rural Golden, we went to school, Ed and I went to school with a Rural Golden, he played football.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Dorit, a lot of them. Alright, to, uh, home occupation?
Okay. Uh, our third request tonight is a request for a type B home occupation for, uh, was submitted by Celia Manaval to have a commissary or base of operations for a food truck at the residence located at two sixty-five Ruben Wells Road in unincorporated Liberty County. You can see the parcel number there and this is in District Three. Uh, food trucks have become very popular in recent years and they are required to have a base of operation that will be approved by the Health Department. And, uh, this would be allowed in a residential zone such as this, uh, with a type B home occupation approval by the Board of Commissioners. So that's why they're here tonight. Uh, you can see, uh, this Ruben Wells Road, uh, this is signs in the front yard. You can see the, uh, ad that was in the Coastal Courier. The, uh, Ruben Wells Road here, this is, uh, Live with Trips Road here. So you can see it's just beyond there, uh, and this enclave of houses here in this subdivision. I think it's maybe the fifth house on the right going up that way. And you can see this area is zone SFMH, which used to be R two eight, but it's for, uh, it allows for single family and duplexes and mobile homes. So that's the, that's the zoning. And this is a picture of the food truck that they would like, uh, to, uh, to use the home as a base of, base of operation for. And these are the home occupation requirements, uh, 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 under your ordinance. A, uh, no more than one non-resident employee. B, uh, customers may come to the, to the residence on a infrequent basis during daytime hour, not more than one or two at a time. And three, retail sales of good may only be incident, incident, incidental to the home occupation. Planning Commission heard this at their September nineteenth meeting and they recommended approval with standard and special conditions. And I'll go into the special condition for you. All food sales must be done off-premise and that's really the, that's really the idea behind the food truck anyway, is that you, that's your base of operations, kinda where you get, clean up everything and restock, but you do all your, all your sales out and wherever you're gonna sell it at.
Here's the petitioner here. Come forward please and. We'll make it painless. Just give us your name for the record please and, and just tell us a little bit about your project.
Good evening, um, I am Celia Tumonwao, this is my husband Leanga Sua, he is one of the city heroes. We were here last year. Um, so we decided to open a food truck business. Um, we're going through the process with public health and, um, they told us we need a base of operation. So now we're gonna build the whole structure with the mop sink where we can restall clean, but other than cooking, we're not gonna cook at our home, just so have our, to drain the water from and clean everything. But other than, thank you for, for having us here and we look forward to have your approval for us to have our home as our commission, I mean commissary and a base of operation.
Mr. Richardson, so the Health Department requires that the, the zoning is done first and then they?
Yes.
Okay, so the next step is getting Health, Health Department's stamp.
The zoning, the zoning piece is the type B home occupation. Once, once you approve that, then we will do this and that.
And we can go through the process and stuff. Everything is on hold until we're approved for this.
Any opposition from the?
Yes, people recall, but nobody expressed opposition and nobody came to the planning commission.
I'll let Commissioner Thiff to speak to it then.
Yes, sir, Ms. Jim, and I was just, uh, wanting clarification. The, um, for this type of home occupation, obviously it's for the, the trader to be there and for them to stock their food or commissary there and, uh, prepare it or whatever and then put it into trader and go out and sell it. That, that's pretty much all what it is.
Health Department requires.
Well, they only expect the trader.
Yeah, it's a whole, we had to build a whole different structure, which we're gonna use, uh, uh, our shed and turn it into, uh, with, um, plummy. Nutrition and everything, yeah.
Yeah.
It's a whole work.
No, I don't have a problem with it, they're very popular.
Thank you.
I have a problem.
You have a problem?
No samples.
We gotta get them permitted and they'll be back, right?
Okay, yes.
And, sure, I, that was a question I, I wanted, I wanted to know what type of food it was gonna be, cause.
Serving, um, some more Pacific Islander food. While me and Hawaiian, we're gonna try to do a fusion of our island food and bring it to Liberty County.
I like that.
The small world after all.
I like that.
Be there, I'm sure. Okay.
Thank you, Chair and take a motion.
Yes, Ms. Chairman, I would make a motion that we approve the type B home occupation.
Second.
Your second, we approve the application that's presented for type B. Ruben's Way Road, looking for some good food. Any further discussion? All in favor, show your hands please. Motion passes.
Thank you.
You can make the next step now.
Thanks.
Conditioner use twenty twenty-three zero six seven.
Okay Chairman, this is our last conditional use request tonight. Uh, this has, uh, been submitted by Brian Pearson on behalf of Mr. Calvin Barrett, uh, who is the owner, for a borrowed pit, another borrowed pit. Uh, the property is zone A one agricultural and AR one. The part, the, the part of the property that's closest to Highway eighty-four is zone AR one, but most of the property is zone A one. Yeah, this property contains, uh, um, really, really over eighteen point eight seven acres. This is what the tax assessor had on it, but the property is located, uh, in unincorporated Liberty County. You can see the parcel number there and that's also in District One.
District One?
You can see here the, uh, ad in the Coastal Courier, the sign on the outside of the wooden fence that, uh, that, that the property is surrounded by. Uh, you can see here, the property is long and deep property here, there's the Highway eighty-four, this is Bill Carter Road. You can see the property goes way back down to the property. Just, just for reference, the, uh, one y'all were talking about earlier with, that Barry Ray got approved was up here on, on the other side of the, of the branch there. And of course, just also for reference, uh, this is the, uh, a nightclub that's been in operation there for about twenty years, uh, Mr. Barrett owns as well, but it's outside of this piece. That, this, this long narrow piece here just kinda goes around that nightclub area there. So that's where it is. Uh, the zoning map, as you can see, as I already said, uh, back half is zone A one, front half is zone AR one. And the nightclub there is on, appropriately is on, uh, C three. And you can see here the wetlands, the back part of this property is mostly wetland, so there won't be a whole lot of pit digging going on back there. Most of the, the pit will be up here on the front half of the property. See also, the flood, the flood map sort of mirrors the wetlands map as well, the back half of the property is wet. So most of the activity is gonna be, or all the activity will be up here in the front half of the property. This is just a picture of the plat here showing the, uh, you can see the nightclub there, Highway eighty-four here. You can just see the road kinda snakes through the, this property and the neighboring property here is, which is owned by, I think, Mr. Barrett's brother. And you can see the site layout here, they're proposing to just, and you recall, uh, this is where the nightclub is. All the property, the rest of the property back in the back is in the wetlands and then the flood plain, so there won't be anything back there. The pit's proposed to be up in the front closer to Highway eighty-four. And the same conditions, you've heard these conditions for three times tonight, we'll go through them one more time. Uh, we have not identified any adverse effects on the, uh, economic value or physical appearance of the surrounding properties. Uh, number two, um, the, the use will be consistent with the comprehensive plan and the purpose of the land use district. Number three, we have not identified any detrimental, uh, any detrimental effects or that would endanger the public health, safety or general welfare. Number four, uh, this will not create an undue burden on transportation, streets, uh, public, uh, utilities, schools, public safety. Number five, uh, this, uh, the design will minimize adverse physical environmental effects on adjacent property, include, uh, including adverse visual impacts on buffer zones where necessary to shield adverse factors. The property is fenced and I think it will continue to be. Uh, number six, the additional space for parking and landscaping and adequate measures for ingress and ingress shall be considered if necessary. We have not noted any. Planning Commission heard this at their September nineteenth meeting and they recommended approval with standard conditions. I do, you all received, uh, uh, an email that I received from a family member of the Lloyd family. Uh, they were, uh, there, there was some concern about the ownership of this property, but we, as, as we do with all of our property, we, we require deed and, uh, had, there's, there's a recorded deed that's been, uh, that shows that this property has been in Mr. Barrett's, uh, ownership since two thousand and eleven for twelve years. So that's what we have to go by, we're not really qualified to litigate anything like that. So, uh, I think the family is gonna pursue action through the probate court and that will go where it goes. So it really is not related to this action, but I just wanted you to be aware that they had submitted that and we told them we would make you aware of this as well. So with that, uh, Mrs. Chairman, uh, Planning Commission did recommend approval and, uh, the applicant and his representative are here as well.
Yeah. Well, actually, what, and what you're saying, we are approving it based on the copies that whatever is recorded.
That's right, there, there is, there's a re- a recorded, recorded evidence of Mr. Barrett's ownership dating back to two thousand and eleven.
Mr. Barrett? Come say hello to us and talk about your. Out of curiosity, so will the, will the nightclub cease?
Well, it will eventually.
Will eventually?
Yeah, uh, I give it, probably after everything get approved, I give it another two years, a year and a half, I'm gonna be done with that.
Just curious. Just curious.
Twenty, twenty-two years, I'm tired.
You're curious for shit, yeah. Cause I saw where the lines were and I said, man, you've got the barrel pit in front of your nightclub.
Yeah.
It was tight, right?
But thank y'all for being the commissioners, uh, I've been seeing y'all faces for a long time and y'all, y'all still here, y'all doing a good job.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Talk a little bit about you, if you will, you gonna talk about the operation, sir?
Yes, Brian Pearson.
Just give us a little overview, Mr. Pearson, how it is all is going. Nothing, nothing scientific.
It's a small pit.
It's a small, it's considered a small pit.
Three acres, yeah. I'm gonna have a lot of dump truck issues. And the plan is to actually palletize a lot of our product. Uh, there is some field dirt if we wanna get moved, but sand is what we're going after. We're gonna bag it and pallet it and go out in flat beds.
Um, but you don't, um, the concerns that the citizens raised about dirt on the road.
Oh, no.
All, all those kinda things, yeah, you just, just be aware.
We have twelve hundred feet of asphalt road that's already in there. The trucks, tires get cleaned off before they even get on that. And then they got twelve hundred feet to the highway and it's a four lane highway, it's. A beautiful setup.
Alright, um, and you're coming out to a busy highway, of course. Houston, where are you gonna pump your runoff to?
We have a sediment pond on site and the same thing, it'll basically feed into the wetland area behind and work its way to Peacock Canal.
Is that brackish, mixed, little bit of it?
Alright, well, and then as Mr. Richardson said, the legal issues, we don't get involved in those things, that, that's, you know.
We can see what they're talking about, but they're just. They're not, we're between.
Hey, it's just not ours?
Yeah, we, we don't.
Alright.
Calvin made a comment there that, he said, you've been seeing us for a long time, Calvin. I built your power line in there, I had never been in your club. You might have been talking about the chair.
What happens in Vegas, stay in Vegas.
I know what you're talking about. You look like you cut all the trees in there.
Yeah, yeah, we cleared it out, yeah.
And, and Commissioner Water and I, I was on the ax, uh, cause I, I know normally whenever we have, uh, things on, on our agenda, you all normally take a ride and, and take a look at it. I, I was just wondering, did y'all get opportunity to go? Or was it during the daytime or nighttime? It was just a question.
Yeah, man, y'all just let me know, man. I'm, I'm always ready for a ride. Yes, sir, ready for a move.
Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the, uh, recommendation coming from LCPC on approval.
Second.
A second, I'd just like to note, you heard the concern, so, you know, please he- help us out by ensuring that.
Absolutely.
It's all about the safety.
Make sure when the trucks leave that they're like it's supposed to be, cause now, now you will be dealing with a state highway.
Alright, all in favor, show your hands please. Motion passes, sir.
Thank you, sir, thank you.
Alright, sir, alright.
Chairman, I'm finally done.
Yeah, you picked on me tonight. I need to see you before you go.
And Georgia State lost, didn't they?
Chairman, I make a motion, we'll go back in regular session.
Second.
Oh, sorry.
All in favor, show your hands, back in the regular session, alright. Uh, there's been the hospital appointment.
Mr. Chair, the left side is ready.
No, we're the right side. See, 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 we started off wrong already.
The right side is ready, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we leave the two standing, uh.
Board members.
Board members, that's on the hospital, Mr. Reggie Pierce and Mr. Daisy Prey in place.
Second.
Discussion.
There we go, Ms. Chair, I know where you're going.
You know where I'm going?
I know exactly where.
I know the hospital has, uh, they normally send, they, they sent those names.
They sent those two names.
Nothing but double the names.
But don't we have to send them twice?
You're supposed to, actually, you're supposed to send three names.
Right.
For each position.
Yeah, and they, and they choose.
And they choose.
Right.
Now, we did have another applicant.
We did.
So, so technically, for clarification, what we should do is we have to send, because there are two vacancies, we have to send one name one way, and then the two, three, and then the two, the second post.
Then come back, it's, it's.
I know, I know.
I knew it was different than the other.
Right.
Glad Commissioner Gillis not here, see?
If, if we need to do that.
See, see, Commissioner Water, we, we got this. We, we got this. So, just a little helping.
We had a motion.
He's by himself tonight over there. He's by himself.
No, I, I understand the, 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 uh.
The process, yeah.
The way that we've got to get the other one.
Yeah, so.
And if you don't, which I'll know the past, if you don't have but three people, it's, so you've put Mr. Pierce.
Right.
The other person.
Uh-huh.
Cause you didn't have but a second applicant. And then for the other position, you put, like, Prey and the other person that applied. And then they would choose.
And then they.
That's a recommendation.
And the other, the other name would be Freddie Howard, Howwell.
So that'd be the three names. So for the first one.
King's Road.
Captain Roberts Rule of Order, I had a motion in a second. We, we didn't, we didn't vote, so now do we have to?
You can amend the motion.
Amend the motion.
Yeah, amend it, okay.
All right, somebody amend the motion. Who, who made the motion?
I did.
I was quiet, so.
I amend the motion as stated. We were at, we had the third person.
All right, now second.
Second.
We send all the three names, uh, Daisy Prey.
Daisy Prey, Reggie Pierce, and Freddie Howard.
Freddie Howard to the House, Hospital Authority. Okay. Any further discussion, let me clear. All in favor, show your hands, please. Those names will be submitted to the Hospital Authority. All right, thank you. Resolution to improve mental health of Georgia.
Yes, sir, I think you might have been copying on a note from ACCG, but they're asking governments in Georgia to adopt a model resolution that you've got there in front of you that urges the Governor and General Assembly to continue efforts to reform and improve mental health services. And as you know, that's something that they've been working on for a while.
Yeah, I'm glad it's getting statewide attention. It, it deserves it.
I'm, I'm, I'm just hoping that, that we, that the state puts some money behind, behind, it's not just words, because mental health is, it's gonna cost us, and we're, we're gonna have to be willing to. And then on top of that, I, I hope that's not one of those unfunded mandates that come down our way, and they don't help us locally with some type of funding.
Optimistic that's getting some real traction, Commissioner Fraser.
I am too.
It's gonna bear some fruit, uh, more than I've ever have been, I'm optimistic now.
Right, yeah, I, I just hope that, that we keep that.
Cause the, especially with the law enforcement influence behind it, and certainly the healthcare, uh, community, so I'm, I'm, I'm optimistic. And this is, this resolution will help to push it forward. So Chair and the motion to approve the resolution is presented.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second?
Second.
Second, any further discussion? All in favor, show your hands, please. We submit that resolution. Grounding announcement, sir?
Not only one, we did receive some, uh, preliminary digest numbers on Friday, so we're already meeting to look at some scenarios for that, and we'll be getting with y'all hopefully by next week.
Yes, sir.
Good deal, all right.
Anything else we could order, commissioners?
Lord and, uh, Mr. Brown, between you and Chairman Lovett and Fire Chief and myself, we need to schedule a meeting.
Oh, yes, that's true.
Yeah.
That's true. Thank you, everybody reminder. Thank you, everybody reminder.
Schedule that meeting as soon as possible, reminder.
My county attorney, what's, will he be back in operation? Do we have any kind of, uh? Be out of pocket for a while?
Just for a little while.
A little while, okay, all right.
Chairman, uh, Mr. Stevens mentioned earlier about, um, Joe Martin there in, in Fire Services on the east end. Of course, I know we, we talked about Joe, and he was, uh, a lot of times he'd come up and he'd talk about things, and some of us agreed on it, some of us didn't.
He did.
His best interest was.
It was.
From that interstate all the way down by, you know, whatever it was. So this is making sure we do some type of proclamation. And I mean, if the chairman wanna agree to it, I should commit to Stevens' district, and he knows him as well as anybody. He could probably have some talking points, but he, uh, he was sometimes the guy that you have to really sit down and talk to and to understand exactly where he was coming from, and he was, uh, dedicated to his profession.
Dedicated to whatever you can.
We can, you let me have it, someone, a family member come in and receive it from us. Uh, we'll, all right.
Chairman, I have one question for Mr. Brown. Have you been to check with GDOT on that era, on that turn light, that airport of fifteenth?
I did send a notice over there, and I have not heard back from them yet. Just wanted to try to change that signal out, but I'll, I'll follow up with him too.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we have one more bright area between here and Midway that has been cleaned up, and I'm real proud of that, that family.
It's, it's, it's slowly coming together. I saw that, all right. Chair and the motion adjourned.
So move.
Second, all in favor, we stand adjourned.